Pardon?
Is everybody else online?
No, no, they just hadn't showed up yet.
Yeah, they'll be here.
Okay, you should be good to go.
How are we going?
Good, good, all right. What's up?
So you're sharing your screen here, just left and right arrows to move through it and you're good to go?
All right, I'm good to go.
I know, right?
How are you doing?
You doing all right?
So far YouTube streams haven't gone so is that quiet up? We're live in the world right now?
We're on air.
I'm the only one watching, right?
I was saying, will, each person will pop up on here that's...
They're talking.
No, well, whomever joins the YouTube, they'll pop up, right, Roger?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, no, whoever's doing Zoom call, yeah.
That, I'm sorry, that's what I mean, whatever, whatever I said, you knew what I meant. Because that's one thing I'm not going to be able to help him with is that part.
Yeah, I'm just looking here, we can see the participants right now, so currently, we're the only ones in the call.
Okay.
I can leave this here so you can see if...
Is that where I'll see everybody?
Right, they will pop up in here.
Okay, all right. You can pull a chair up right back here if you need to.
That's perfectly fine. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be as helpful as possible, but stay out of your way at the same time.
What's Courtney's last name, do we?
You were gonna ask.
Okay, Courtney, from Garvern Associates.
I'm looking it up, I'm trying to find her. I know she sent me here, I don't know, she just sent me her or someone over. She has a half an A in the name, do you remember?
Oh, never mind. Quite all right.
Exactly. So I wouldn't even know which one to tell you to say.
Back here, okay.
And I think she said she's gonna try to join, so she should be trying to get on shortly. And if she can't connect, I can put her on speakerphone.
Okay.
Oh, she's trying to connect. There she goes.
Hey.
Are you there?
How's the internet holding up?
So far, so good, can you hear us good?
I can.
Oh, good deal.
Have her on here.
Yep.
Okay, that, it's gonna be her right there.
Just okay, just had her name, and I thought her picture would come up.
Roger, will her picture show up on here?
All right.
Or just her name? Will her picture show up or just her name?
I've got my camera turned on, but it may, if you're having internet, it may not show.
No, we can see you.
Oh, okay, okay.
And there's our red hot agenda.
We're all about it.
We are. I hope you came with snacks in your pocket.
So we got...
Were you expecting any other callers or just her?
I'm just her, as far as I know.
So much for our security.
Eighty-six. Howdy.
And you'll have to do the whole gamble of, at the beginning of the meeting, telling people that if they come to the microphone, there's lights underneath it, thank you sir, you can make us go, that they will need to light down the microphone after they get done.
Okay.
Which is the only people that should be using the microphone, is Erin.
You gotta still speak loud into it.
Yeah, but it's better than the other microphones, for sure. They don't have, they don't have to eat it, so.
Yeah, okay.
They should be up in here.
Just speak normally.
Yeah, yeah. Hello, man, how are you?
I'm good.
You don't have to wear your mask, as long as you stay close to that microphone, stay away.
Mitch'll fall off the end down there.
Yeah, he's gonna fall off that step down there. Are you gonna give me a prayer, are you gonna ask something?
I've got one, I'll...
Okay.
It's brief.
That's fine, I'm done waiting, just write down.
Yeah.
The more I can write down prayer, the better.
Right, yeah.
Are you gonna leave the pledge?
Yeah.
I'm eavesdropping, what'd you just say? Oh, I didn't email the agenda, I didn't email a new agenda, I emailed that, and then the package, I emailed Friday, me, so, actually, no, I'm sorry, from Kim's email address, it came to me because she's been out.
I was just hoping for a horn.
Seven o'clock, I'm sorry, Brian Vines?
Oh, yes, he's the, with, he's our city engineer. With half.
Okay.
Art, you can call the office.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock, okay. Okay, I've got seven o'clock, it's time for the planning commission meeting, I welcome everybody here that's here, and everybody that's online with us tonight, Chad couldn't be with us tonight, but I'll, I'll try to do as good as he does, so, here we go, if everybody could, please join me in an opening prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we gather here as citizens of this community to discuss the issues before us, give us your wisdom to decide, decide what is right, direct us away from any of our biases we may have, and to remember, we are all neighbors and friends, Lord, our aim in the end is to only bring glory to you, amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, I'd like to ask for roll call.
Bird? Love?
Here.
Kreider?
Here.
Young? Ward? Mouty? Arvin?
Okay, okay, the, I need acceptance of the meeting, or the minutes of the meeting from October, are there any changes from the commission, do you think we need to change on that? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval on that in a second.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mitch?
Yes, here.
Liz?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's see, October, that's approved, okay, it is 7:02, like to open the planning commission meeting. New business, if you can...
Can close the meeting? Close the public hearing?
Oh, I need to close the public hearing, okay, I'm sorry. Close that at 7:03, yeah, I waited long enough. Okay, new business, preliminary plat?
Preliminary plat, lot one, Carson addition, bonded associates.
Okay, like, we have Courtney McNair with us from Garvern Associates, I'd like for her to brief us on the staff notes.
Yes, um, do you want me to share my screen, or do you have a slide of it so that everyone can see? Or do, do the commissioners have a copy in front of them?
They have a copy.
Oh, okay. Okay, then we can just move forward then, so yes, this was, this property is off of Park Drive, and also has access on the Chapel Ridge Drive, it's a private drive, and they're planning to reroute Park Drive, yeah, there, there's a good slot of it, recently, if you remember, this was approved for a rezoning to allow, excuse me, to allow the current zoning to be, for multifamily residential. It is, it was a little strange on the preliminary plat that they didn't plot out the second, the other portion, but I did talk to Ms. Nobles about that, and she does believe that they're gonna come back and probably plot this lot at a later time when they have decided what they are going to do on that section, so I don't think it's a problem. The main concerns that I had were, looking at this, there is a large drainage swell across, and Mr. Vines may want to speak too, whether that needs to be in an easement for drainage or not, but there's a large drainage swell, and they're actually doing their detention pond here, so if, if the city wants an easement to have access to that, if it ever needs any access, they would need to let that know, and the other thing was, we needed an agreement for, for the owners along Chapel Ridge Drive to allow access onto that, onto lot one, since they've cut off their access to Highway 367 by plating this lot, unless they have a legal access easement agreement on Chapel Ridge Drive, they, they don't have legal access to lot one. I think that was everything, there are some minor plat corrections, like setbacks needed to be adjusted, for R4, the side setbacks are 25 feet, they've got them shown as 20, they aren't showing some exterior easements, but again, I feel like these are all pretty minor plat issues, I think the biggest one is the access and the drainage issue, so, if there are any questions, I'm happy to go over them.
Questions for her? Okay, is there anybody here to speak for this?
I'm here.
You can state your name, and...
Aaron Robinson with Bond Engineering. Yes, so I talked to Laura about all these issues this afternoon, and the majority of them are all pretty easy to fix, we have contacted Chapel Ridge, they have a, I just got a text message before I came here, they've got a couple of questions that they're gonna email us tomorrow, and we're hoping to actually have an agreement tomorrow with them, it's either gonna be agreement, or it's not gonna be an agreement. If, for whatever reason, they come in and say that, no, they're not gonna give us access to Chapel Ridge, we're just going to basically extend whole drive back out to Highway 367 the way it is now. Basically, we got rid of that because we didn't want the road going through the commercial to get back to the residence, or back to the multi-family.
Okay, what about the drainage issue? Is that...
Yes, I talked to, I talked to Laura about that, because one, one of the comments was the drainage easement, and I really didn't know how to show a drainage easement, because it's not a perfect square, it's not a channel that's really definable, because it is a detention pond, there's actually two of them on either side of the road, so what we've agreed to is I'm going to go to the top of bank of the detention pond and round it to the nearest foot, basically, trying to get like a 15, 20, something like that, where it doesn't actually get into the buildings itself, but try to get to the top of bank, and that will be the drainage easement, so it's gonna be a really wide drainage easement there.
Okay.
It's not gonna be like a 20 foot, it's gonna be like 75, 80, 90 foot wide.
Okay. Does there need to be an engineering study or anything on that?
He submitted a drainage report.
That's, that's been submitted, okay. Okay.
He's on the call.
Okay.
One question, is that detention existing, or is that detention your building?
That's detention we're building, there's just a ditch there right now, and so we're actually detaining, I don't remember my calculations exactly, but we're retaining roughly six times the amount of water that is required to detain.
You will see that on the next project, it's not shown on this plat, but it will be shown on the site plan.
Okay, so the commission have anything, any more questions for, for Aaron?
On the road that accesses Highway 367, y'all were just, the only reason they wanted to get away with it was, is because you had all people coming to the commercial property there?
That, so essentially, when we rezoned this, with that commercial right there, by the time you do all the setbacks, you keep park drive in there, the corner piece is essentially useless unless you just have parking there, so to get rid of the drive, you actually create more frontage along 367, now, you know, we could leave the drive in there, do some parking, you have buildings on the other side, then you've got people walking across a...
That's all right, I was just saying, that's the only reason, keeping both of them, I'm not gonna do anything now, for the first thing, you said, I said, because you've got a, I said, you don't hurt the property value.
From a planning standpoint, the, using Chapel Ridge Drive is actually better to route all of the residential traffic onto anyway, so, so we do actually like that, it's just the easement has to be in place.
Okay, anything else from the commission? Okay, thank you. With that, and with contingencies here, I'd like to ask for a motion from the commission for approval?
Were we approved of this?
Proven the preliminary plat? What you see?
With the contingency of the, you know, of the easements.
And you've still gotta get permission from Chapel.
Yeah.
So it's not really, it's not, yeah, on the, on this, yeah.
Right.
Motion to approve the project with those contingencies, so move.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Mouty?
Yes.
Okay, preliminary plat is approved? Okay, site plan for the same addition?
Site plan, lot one, Carson addition, bonded associates.
Yes, so this is the exact same property that just, that you just saw with the preliminary plat for lot one, it's approximately four acres, and the plan is to add nine quadplexes onto the property, there's an existing duplex and an existing single family residence already on the property, and then if you can see, in the middle of, of this, there is a, that detention pond that goes across that natural drainage way, they have connected two entrances to Chapel Ridge Drive, which is good, they, they originally had it stopping short of Chapel Ridge on the second entrance, but this actually makes for better traffic flow, and there are a few concerns, most of them, again, related to the access on Chapel Ridge, I do have a question about the setbacks, since the, since the side setback is 25 feet, are you going to be able to still fit your buildings on the site? Right now, you're showing a 20-foot side, side setback, so it's, everything's gonna have to be shifted, and I just, I wasn't sure if the applicant was aware of that, and then there's a small section of the first entrance drive that is actually on the remainder tract from what we just plotted, and that will also need to be in that, the access easement agreement, but I assumed that wouldn't be a problem since they're under the same ownership control. I think, I think those are the main ones, there were some remaining water and fire comments, so those will need to be addressed as well, but I think, right now, the most critical for design is gonna be the setback issue, and again, that access issue. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Does the fire department have any comments on this?
No, just the, the two hydrant locations that we need for the, one, one at the, by building one, and one down about over four on the left hand side. And then, I don't know if they've been done 60 for 367, but with that, that access, with that access draft, on the highway, there's a street like in, we're eventually gonna have to put a red light right there, for people that are ever gonna be able to get out on the same street, sort of type of day, so, some point in time, when the city takes over, right now it's a state, the city's in the process of taking the power, we're gonna get the hook, put a red light right there just for traffic, otherwise those folks will never be getting, have a hard time getting out, getting out of the reach of the lines and shit, but from this standpoint, the site's really big, just our two hydrants is all concerned, right now, the, the two, the two exits on, on Chapel Ridge are spicy.
Okay.
So you would rather have park drive closed off anyway, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I would, and those, those, when you got a lot of traffic coming up Chapel Ridge, and a lot of traffic coming out of that area right there, so, but my concern is that the flow is gonna come out of Chapel Ridge. And that street's just getting busier and busier, we've had it for ourselves, busy with, with a house, we call it a house.
You're gonna put stuff on your Murrell Street?
Uh, right there at the Chapel Ridge.
Chapel Ridge, yes.
I'm not, I'm not the type of person who's... I mean, it's, you know, when, when I go home at, you know, six o'clock at night, that road's just, sometimes it goes up the backside, you go out there by dream.
Aaron, this property, you all the way Murrell Street, right next to Sonic?
Thank you, chief.
No, this, this piece doesn't, the, the, the commercial piece does, but this piece does not.
I know, it's all subject, I wonder if there's ever anyone around the back to put the road to Murrell Street?
There's not, I've looked.
I mean, that's, because then you put stuff up there.
Because I actually, one of the, because during the rezoning process, that was one of the main comments was, if we could get everything on Chapel Ridge Drive and get rid of park, that's what everybody really wanted, so that's why you see it this way, and I actually tried to go along that north property line to come out on Murrell, through the commercial property, but that just really, basically what happened is, the existing structures that are there, you have to get rid of those in order to make it work.
New place.
Right. To answer the question about the setbacks, so Laura just brought that up to me this afternoon too, before I came, I started tweaking the buildings and the parking lot around a little bit, I've got a little bit of play on one side, not as much play on the other side, and I can make up that 10 foot, because it's five foot on either side, so we'll, we'll get that in there.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll fix all that and give that back to Laura, make sure that, you know, she agrees that everything that we're doing is based off all the checklists.
I'm sorry, Aaron, one other thing, the landscaping plan, was there a layer turned off on that?
No, and I talked to Laura about that today as well, that is completely my mistake, I read the first part of that comment, which said, you know, go along the right of way, and so I said, well, there is no right of way, so there is no landscaping plan, so I just forgot to give her the interior landscaping plan.
I understand.
We'll give that to her tomorrow.
Yeah, the legend had all of the plants listed, but then zero plants, and I thought maybe it was just a layer got turned off, so...
Well, yeah, it's all turned off, because I was...
Yeah.
...exterior.
Right.
That lane behind there is empty, and that, that, that road, and I know it's all subject to Murrell Street, but it really would be nice if for some reason, you're making this your plan and development side, in case somebody ever does develop that, that you could push that road to Murrell Street for the fire department, or like he says, to relieve traffic in the future, as you could, and these, they could cut out there and grow it that way.
Yeah, the church owns all that property back there.
Well, there's a section between that and church that they don't own, and a guy across the road, it looks like.
Would that be Sonic?
No.
No?
No, but anyways, I don't know how hard to be, leaving the opening that way you could cut back across there, behind that existing complex.
With all the water that's coming through there from the drainage, it'd be a pretty significant structure, I mean, you could, you could tee in right there, you know, where the box is later on, and try to go that way, that you would end up having a significant drainage structure there, whoever decided to build it, I didn't size anything for that, all the detention and everything is right there right now, so...
And I'm in agreement, I just think for the future, you know, for the great fire department sale, I don't want no stoplights.
And we did put both, I did talk to the fire chief, and, you know, that's why we have both of those drives in there, and we did add the other fire hydrant that he replaced at the other entrance, yeah.
Kinda hard to tell, are we, are we covered on lighting and dumpster and all that in there?
Yeah, so you, there is a dumpster pad in there, and we had a dumpster screening, the lighting plan, so I didn't actually submit a lighting plan, the electrician gave it to me today. I didn't actually submit a lighting plan, the electrician gave it to me today, and I passed that along to Laura as well. There's a lot of overhead electrical there. Entergy is actually, the reason it's taken so long to get the lighting plan, energy's trying to create a plan right now to eliminate all that overhead electric. Or I say all of it, the majority of it. And they're trying to put a lot of it underground. Chapel Ridge is actually fed two different ways, and they're trying to fix all that. There's a line that actually goes kind of parallel with 367 through this property, they're trying to get rid of all that, so trying to figure out where everything is at, and how the poles are gonna be there to see how we're gonna put the lights, is kind of what we're waiting on. And Chapel Ridge Drive actually has a lot of streetlights on it right now, anyway. They kinda alternate back and forth as you drive down. And that's not shown on the plan, but I wanna, with the lighting plan, I wanna show your staff where those existing lights are.
Okay.
So Park Drive is not a public tree?
It was not.
Okay, anything else from the commission?
Is, is staff comfortable with the setback issue and?
It'd be a contingency.
Yeah, these are all the contingency items. They won't be, it won't be signed off unless all these items are met.
Okay, agree.
Do I have a second? Second?
Second.
Excuse me, we have a question out here. Come on up, please ma'am, state your name.
Kristen Knox. I own the property next door, I just had a few issues, questions, it's more likely to comment. Last thing I talked to Erin about was the drainage, because it all drains through my front yard. I have a big ditch there. I've known this is a famous ditch, but I don't have proof of that, I mean, nobody's actually told me it's a famous ditch. But, um, anyway, it sounds like there's got a potential plan, plan, so I should be happy with that. I know, I felt your ears out, didn't I?
You tell me you're happy.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
So you got that under control.
Yeah, we talked about that.
The other issue is that we had given Chapel Ridge sewer easement, and there's three manholes down Chapel Ridge. Is you planning on tying into them, or are you gonna plan your own?
Where? We'll go ahead and ask Laura your questions, and then I'll answer.
The other question I have for the fire department, the buses sound terrible time making that turn into Chapel Ridge. In fact, it's couple of them hanging, stuck up on the curb. So I don't know if the fire trucks have an issue with that, I know they stopped my car with a truck lately.
I'm telling you, my heart is off a 367, don't you?
Yes.
And I, I don't think we've ever had a problem with it. Our, 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 the, the wheel lanes are trucks, from front to back, I learned why I had one of the most terrible, you know, so our big truck. I, I mean, we've been, I've been before, we don't have problems with it. We just look at that, turns into, we're building one of those, and you're going down by building four. If there's cars on both sides, we have to see us having an issue, and we have to turn back out there, and back on the chapel, we'll, we'll have to look at the problem, we can get in there, but just get out.
Well, I know it was issuing, they, when they developed Chapel Ridge, my parents lived in the lot, I, my dad was a tall tailor, so I don't know if it's true or not, because I was, he told me to take Chapel Ridge this evening. That time of day is not. They paid for that, that street. So, um.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Would you be willing to grant them another easement to make a wider right turn lane?
Well, it would make my advantage, would it?
It would make it safer for everybody coming out, you can make a right turn.
From that 367?
Yeah.
Sure, because I have an issue sometime getting out.
Somebody's, everybody's like, go left, you could go right if you rented something, you could have that.
Well, anyway, when, um, they did Chapel Ridge, the fire department, this is that they had two ingress and in, so you're okay with? This is question, I'm sorry, Erin. I wanna say resume.
You're, you're fine, ask whatever questions you want, it doesn't matter.
No, this is fine, we can get in at Chapel Ridge, we can get in one, we can get in the chapel.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we can negotiate on Chapel Ridge, too, then you can have an approval on that easement, I mean, I help everybody.
Yeah.
Or a wide turn lane.
That, and your, your comment about her granting easement right there went wide on that. If, if there was the issue of putting a red light there in the future, because.
Traffic's bad, is it back up?
No, not too bad. No, it's not, usually more than four or five cars. That takes mine away.
So you're only talking about how many more? These are duplexes, and how many residents are you talking about on your site plan there? Building one's got two?
Four, they're all quad.
They're all quad?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So that's, that's not gonna increase the traffic that much.
There's, there's two cars.
I'm sorry, do you enter a vision of?
I'm gonna come up there, I'm gonna keep six foot from you. No, not two, I figured I'd get your microphones, or I just hear.
You're up, Erin.
So the, uh, we're actually rerouting some of the sewer, because it goes through building number seven, you can kind of see the dash line right there. So we're actually going around building seven and six, and we're gonna come down and tie into that main that is along Chapel Ridge Drive.
Which side of the street is that?
It's on your side.
That's what I'm, that's the manhole I'm talking about.
It's on your side, we're gonna have to bore Chapel Ridge Drive and tie into it. It's not on your property, though, if that makes you feel better.
It's on there fifty foot. Okay.
I think so, I need to check that, I may have lied.
Well, I'm not legal, whenever you say, and you're gonna do that.
Any other questions remain?
No, anything from the commission? Okay, well, I'm gonna back up and, with those contingencies, ask for a motion in a second. I have a motion down here, and we got a second down here, it's still good, okay. Uh, roll call vote?
Byrd?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Maudy?
Yes.
The motion is approved? With the contingencies? There we go. Thank you. Okay, our next item is a replat.
Replat lot one RR Ladue subdivision, Bond and Associates.
Okay. It's Courtney, you have a. We have a staff report on this, okay, that's right, you told me that.
Ms. Courtney does not have a staff report on this item, this was a last minute item added through Mr. Bonds, or through Erin's office. This is a simple replat of two lots into one. The homeowner is wanting to build a house and cannot ironically fit it on just the one lot, so they have purchased the second lot to be able to have a bigger yard and fit the house that they would like to build on this lot. It is not gone through tech review, so staff will have to send this through tech review, that will be actually going out tomorrow. And if they have any comments, Erin has assured me that they would address any comments that would be outstanding for the commission. If you had any questions, I can answer any that you may have.
Are there changes to any setbacks, any easements?
No.
Anything else from the commission? Anybody here to speak for this?
Just me.
Just you? Okay. Well, with that, I would like to entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion.
Motion from Matt?
Second.
Roll call.
Maudy?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. The replat. Okay. Community input, do we have anybody here that would like to stand up and speak a concern for the community? Step forward, please. State your name.
Jim Green. I provided you guys some information. I'm, I'm, I'm not actually asking for a vote, missing doing thing. I was hoping to expose you to some information that you probably, or you may have some of it. Uh, there's been 15 years of things happening with Lakewood subdivision, and multiple entrances and single entrances, and so I, I don't know, I'm assuming you have some, some drawings and some documents that I had provided that deals with this 15-year project.
Jim, I will, I will tell you, I didn't see you come in before the meeting started, so I did not pass any of it out, I did bring it, but I did not pass it out to any of them, because I didn't see you when the meeting first started.
Well, let me give you a short history, and then we'll look at, and then you'll look at. Property actually has a history that dates back to 2005. The commercial area in, in the front on 321, kind of, is, is where we started construction. Prior to it being annexed, we had planned for three entrances onto 321. I actually had, well, one of them was an existing entrance that was covered there, I'm assuming back when 321 was originally built. I had two others. One in the middle and one on, this, this one was on the west end of the, the property has approximately, or my property has about a thousand foot of frontage on 321. Uh, this existing access was on the very western corner of, of, of that property. So we were going to add two more accesses onto it. We got highway department approval. We had those three entrances almost finished at the point we started commercial construction, and I don't remember the details, but at that point, the, I'm assuming the planning commission decided that's, they didn't want three entrances on 321. So that started a a three-year battle. I already had one of them, and had spent several thousand dollars to get those entrances in, and I went to the, obviously the planning station, city council, ordered adjustment, mayor's office over a period of years, two or three years, trying to maintain those three entrances. The end result is I gave up, and we ended up with a single entrance that is there now, to the commercial area as well as the residential area. We started construction, or planning stages for phase one of, of Lakewood, which was 56 lots. And at that same time, obviously, as, as usual, we submitted a sketch flat of the entire Rosina, which is probably in these drawings that I had rearranged. We had a sketch flat showing, I'm, I'm not sure if you did the exact number, approximately 200 lots, with a single entrance, as you, as it is now. No problems there. We built 56 lots, and then in 2000, it was approved in 2015. We were planning on the phase two, which was, at that one time, was going to be approximately 40 lots, there were 14 lots on the north side of the lake, and that, and I guess the balance of it, 27, 28 lots on the south side of the lake. That, and had submitted a preliminary plat for that set of lots. During the process, the commission decided that they needed an additional access. The single access wasn't so that like.
Was this in 2015?
2000. It was approved in 2015, probably somewhere within a few months of 2015, I'll give dates. But 2015 is when we submitted the 40, 39, 41 lot, whatever it was. I wasn't at the meeting that dealt with this issue, Mr. Lemmons was. The issue was brought up about needing a, an additional entrance. Well, to me, the additional entrance should have been an issue in 2005, not 2015, because at that point, trying to get access, another access on the 321 was basically impossible. But Mr. Lemmons, I think visited the chief smart, and I think the state fire marshal, I wasn't privy to that conversation or conversations, and and they arranged for me to put a an entrance or a stubout street from my street onto the adjoining property, which is the Pimblett property, Mr. Pimblett's property. And, and that, the environment, at that one time, I guess the fire marshal agreed to it, and and that's what took place. So the preliminary plat for phase two, which was, were 10 lots on one side of the lake, 30 on the other side. And, and I, I didn't, I didn't challenge the decision that was made in my absence, which was putting the stubout in as a, because they had, they had written the state fire code that said you need two accesses for more than 31 lots. So I relinquished basically a lot, because a lot 50 foot wide, it it creates a corner lot, which means you gotta have an extra 20 foot on, on the side of the street for that, for that big lot, so.
And disagree with that requirement?
Yes.
Do, that fire code, do you, are you familiar with it? When that was changed, or this?
It's been the same.
It, I, I know it was per the fire chief's information, it was in effect in 2012.
Okay, so it changed.
And it may have been 2006, I don't know, or 1992. They go back to at least 2000.
Well, in the, so the, the, the fire prevention code previous to 2000, well, it's not necessarily 2000, well, it's the 2004 petition. It's what the city currently has adopted as a fire prevention code. So when his, when being built, it was the 2007 fire prevention code. Well, it was the 2002 before that, and then 2005.
Okay.
And announced.
It changes.
Well, it changes, as, as they have, and we adopt them as a city, so. But the last three fire prevention codes, it's, it's the same verbiage, in a different code, on all three previous issues. It hasn't changed, but it was the same, back as it does by now.
Kind of a good question.
As far as I could tell, it was, nothing has changed in the fire code, or, even though we've got different codes, it's, it has an issue.
When you talk about getting approval and things of that nature along the way, all those years along, each phase, though, kind of reboot. those years along, each phase, though, kind of reboots it, correct? And so at that point in time, if one phase takes ten years to do, then the next phase, I mean, things change. And so at that point in time, phase two comes along, you have to go by the rules. You know, we discussed all this last meeting with you. My question, and I think the question at the end was, did you ever have a conversation with Mr. Phelan about potentially getting an easement on his east side? Because the easiest thing from our discussion was, you, we talked about the stubout, and then we talked about somehow, even if you're, you had a gravel easement that ran up the east side of his property, that then connected back in at the exertion gym, where you got, you know, where you kind of got a road to nowhere going west at the exertion gym right there. If you had a way for the fire department to come through and make that circle down your west side, his east side, to where it just stubbed right back into exertion, but ultimately, until that conversation's had, I mean, there's...
Well, you're assuming that he's willing to give it up, less than half a million dollars yourself.
Well, he just assumed that with... I like to not be around, but let's get to it, you know? It just, when you start talking about the three entrances that were cut off, that had to do with commercial property. Really, if you had two entrances into your, if you had two entrances out of a residential into that commercial property, we'd probably be okay.
Well, if I had those two entrances, I'd have, I would have a way out.
Right.
But...
No, not talking about on the highway, even if you had two from the residential into the commercial, we could probably find a workwear way around it. That way, people could actually get out of there. But the thing is, the rules just end up changing from what they gave.
But they haven't changed, that's the point. In 2005, the rules that you're talking about right now were in place. You visualize a sketch flat showing a hundred and ninety lots, something like that, and one entrance. So, as far as I'm concerned, I got a blessing on a hundred and eighty lots with a single entrance. Now, you can...
I wouldn't know if I know what the rules were, but right now, you can't, for fire code, we just can't.
Well, but you couldn't then either. In the whole, the rule hasn't changed.
Did we find the paperwork from that time?
But I don't know at what point that we had to honor what, you know, a decade...
Right, right, that supplement, course, I'd have to deal with it, I'm sure. But I'm, that's, my purpose of being here is to lay out my story and be what it may.
Yeah.
It falls where the judges say, "No."
And nobody dislikes the rules more than me.
But now, but having said that, so now we're talking about 2005, 2005 sketch flat. Now let's come up to 2015, same thing. I have a, supposedly have an approved preliminary plan, a new sketch flat showing two hundred lots, an entrance onto 321 and a stubout toward Willfield that was approved. So now I've got a 2015 approved plan, and then in 2000, when I'm trying to finish it, it's no longer approved. And you can obviously see that. And that's what this information that I had provided was to show that we've got a second sketch flat, I'm assuming it's in your records, a new sketch flat with, I'm gonna say a hundred and ninety-five lots, with a single entrance and a stubout to where it is now.
You were talking about your three entrances that were all going to commercial property in 2005.
Well, we can, all right.
So, no, I'm just asking this, so you were talking about that you, it wouldn't have been a problem if they would have approved your three entrances.
If it had been addressed back then, I could have, for example, just to get the stubout lot that I got now, that goes into Peters property, that cost me a lot, I could have ignored one of my lots in the first phase and run straight through there. Because my, the entrance that the commercial is using right now, or the entrance that the residential is using is a commercial street, it's thirty-six feet wide and so on and so forth. So, if I had two commercial streets, I possibly, well, I could have, I could have given up a lot and went through out here. But the point is, because of the time lapses between 2005 and 2015, and I was confident that Mr. Lemmons had satisfied that issue in 2015, because I gave up a thirty-five-thousand-dollar lot for that solution, and then now I'm finding that that solution is not a solution, we're gonna have to add more.
But in 2015, do you have that paperwork that shows that he got the approval of those lots five years ago? I mean, that's, there's a big difference in fifteen years ago and five years ago.
That final plat for that, with that step...
Preliminary.
Well, you have platted that...
Oh, yes, 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 I, wait, let me repress a little bit. Phase two, that were fourteen lots on the north side of the lake and thirty-nine on the other side. Because of the weather, we ended up building, or concentrating on the fourteen lots on the north side of the lake, and was gonna work on the other part as well. Time thing, timing, weather, and that changed. So I'm just now finishing the last half of the preliminary plan that was approved in 2015.
But we had that, and it's been approved, it was approved with the stubout? And that was, that was sufficient to the fire chief in 2015?
We have a preliminary plat that was not signed, but he has a final plat that shows that phase two has been divided into two A and two B.
Right.
Phase two A, which is the north part of the lots where he has the stubout street, has been approved and built. That was approved. The second part is, on the south side of the lake, is what he brought to the planning commission.
At that same time, we did a new sketch flat showing the two hundred lots and the stubout.
Because that was what you thought would be sufficient as your second entrance?
The end was, the last time we'd have to deal with that issue, and we're dealing with it again.
But did the fire chief approve that stubout in 2015?
I don't believe he did.
It would have to be if it was recorded, I don't know that answer.
Well, I've been told, Mr. Chief Smart, Master Smart, had a conversation with Mr. Lemmons and the state fire marshal, and that was their solution, because part of the, part of the regulation that says you've got to have more than thirty-one, I mean, you've got to have two accesses for more than thirty-one lots, has a caveat in it, that if you have a plan, and so I guess that was, that's what they were hanging their head on at that one time.
If you've been approved for a second, a stubout for a second street, then it has to be assumed that future, that second street is going to be used.
Yes, absolutely.
So...
But not necessarily by me.
But it's your subdivision.
Well, the part I'm...
So, at some point, there's got to be another entrance, and if that stubout is for a second entrance...
I would agree, but that's not what the regulation's saying. The regulation stops with the fact that you've got to, you're taking it one step beyond, which is logical, but I'm saying, they, the people, it wasn't me, but Mr. Lemmons and the authorities at that point in time decided that satisfied...
That satisfied, at that point?
At that point.
And when you extend a subdivision to another phase and add more houses, then they're assuming that you're going to use that second stubout for another road.
No, well, that is not what their intent was, that is my point. Their intent was, well, I'm assuming part of their intent was, we've screwed up, we've seen a sketch flat with one entrance and two hundred lots, and it...
Where is, where is that? Where is that?
Where's the sketch?
Where is that disapproval that you got for two hundred lots?
Well, I'm trying to find, Mr. Green, I have the draw, the sketch flat that was submitted to the council.
We seem to be beating a dead horse here, we're not, we gotta, we gotta resolve this.
You need land for secondary access, you've got a plat of access to a property you don't own, that's public land.
Yes.
You need plat of access to public roadway or another street?
Right.
And that's what it boils down to, and that's running around, running around.
Well, but the point is, you approved that.
I did not approve that.
I know. I say, when I said, the planning commission approved that concept. Now, you're saying that concept was wrong, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I wasn't involved directly in it, but the powers that be at that point in time assumed it was okay, and they okayed, they gave you the preliminary plat and a final plat without any of these caveats about, well, you've got to go from father, it's not good enough that you just started a street, you've got to finish a street, so all, but none of that was even discussed, as far as I can tell.
Is Mr. Lemmons still your engineer on this project? Is Mr. Lemmons still your engineer on this project? Can he maybe get with the city and the staff and try to resolve this one way or another? Come up with a new engineering plan, or...
Well, it has to be something that gets past the fire department.
But yeah, that's where, that's where we're dead in the water.
The bottom line is, it's not economically feasible for me to split in that street. I mean, that's where it's gonna end up, it's just, I don't know, it's, it's just not gonna happen. I mean, it can't happen, it can't, unless I want to lose money on every lot I'm selling.
Mr. Green, what I really think is, none of us are gonna agree.
I'm not asking you to agree to anything tonight.
It's gotta be, well, I'm not talking about tonight, the fire department has to agree before we...
Right. There's a problem.
We don't want a little kid being in the house that they can't get to, they call on fire, you don't need it.
And part of it, part of this information that I was gonna present to you shows, this situation is all over your city. There are many, many, many subdivisions, well over two hundred and fifty lots, with only one entrance, many. I outlined five or six of them and showed them where they were on Google Earth.
I wouldn't hear of them.
No, I know, but I did it last week.
I know, I'm saying, we weren't, again, we weren't...
Well, but my point is, it is a very common situation, was the point I was making. I'm not trying to say because it happened again, I shouldn't be able to do it, but I'm just saying that is a common, and I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess probably every city has that same scenario, that you've got, it's a very, very, very common situation. I'm trying to tell you how to fix it, but I'm saying it's, it's out there.
Okay.
So it's not, this is just my subdivision, but the city of Galway has, I don't know, maybe north, back, I don't...
Well, there's no new subdivisions going in, so...
Well, I'm talking about, these are subdivisions that are four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years old. But my point is, there are, if you pull up Google Earth and start circling subdivisions that have more than thirty-one houses, I only circle the ones that have above two hundred with only a single entrance. And I don't know how many there'd be with only thirty-one. So I would say that there are beaucoup subdivisions in your city that are in violation, as were my first fifty-six lots, I violated the rule 2006, I had fifty-six lots on phase one, so anyway.
Okay. Well, Mr. Green, I, you know, appreciate your comments, but I think need to back up and regroup and get with Mr. Lemmons and start this over again, see where it can go. Not much we can do with it tonight, but...
Oh, I didn't, I, again, I didn't expect, all I wanted to do was have a conversation.
Yeah, okay.
That was my sole purpose, is to expose you to what I've dealt with for fifteen years, and every time I deal with it, I think, okay, so now, pops a tent up again, and I'm sure it will later. Thank you much.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Anybody else from the community? Okay, I'd like to thank Courtney for helping us out tonight and Laurel for backing me up. And with that, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment. Second? Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney.